Good evening, everyone. We always start each council meeting with a word of prayer and the pledge of allegiance. If you'd like, please feel free to join.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, you for this city. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. And we pray that our decisions from out Lord would reflect you and what you would have them to be. In the name of your name.
We'll now call this meeting order. Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Smell?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Sisby?
Here.
Okay, good evening, everyone. You should have received copies of the special city council meeting for April 28th, 2020. Any corrections, changes, or comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. The meeting is submitted. There's no discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Passes eight to zero. First up, we have our standing committees. We'll be starting with community development. Mr. Hawkins, this is all you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is an ordinance amending ordinance number O-2020 for the purpose of correcting a legal description of the property that was rezoned. And the ordinance to be read for this item is number O-20-
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Make a motion to waive three readings.
I can't.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Passes eight to zero. Mr. Walden, would you like to brief the council on this, please?
Yes, sir. Essentially, what happened is we left one of the lots off of the description for the ordinance and ordinance to correct it.
An ordinance to correct it.
Okay. Counsel, you have any questions?
I make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Sisby?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ledbetter?
Yes.
Smell?
Aye.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance approving the low bid and appropriating funds for the Salem and Erby roundabout. And I am, you get this thing going.
Woo-hoo. Indeed. Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Sorry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this orders. Everybody's excited about this one, huh?
Yes, we are. It's ordinance O-2025, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Miss Sisby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Miss Smith?
Yes.
Miss Smell?
Aye.
That passes eight to zero.
Mr. Mayor, do we know when that construction might begin?
Mr. Vincent?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, sir. We should be able to issue a notice of award probably within a few days. And notice to proceed shortly after. And I think the contractor will have 10 days to proceed after that. So hopefully by the end of the month.
Okay, very good.
Right.
And a lot of weather.
Yeah, yeah, we need that, too.
And looking on the ordinance, the price was $740,000, is that correct?
I believe so.
That's actually, that's not quite as much as I thought it might be. It's a very good price.
Yeah, it is a good number.
We own, we own some of the property there that helped us a little bit, I would say.
Yes, it did.
Yeah.
Good.
Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve entering into a real estate contract to acquire property at 702 and 704 Donaghy Avenue for the Donaghy Avenue Improvement Project. And we have a resolution to be read for this. Mr. Garrett, what's that resolution number?
The resolution R-2024.
R-2024 is our resolution number.
And Mr. Clausen is going to address this.
Mr. Clausen?
Good evening, counsel. So last time that we met, I kind of mentioned that we had re, we had worked with Finley and Phillip Vick over at the Transportation Department.
Resolution to be read.
And anyway, just had, had been working with them to kind of get ahead of some of this property acquisition for some of the improvement projects. Donaghy being kind of the first one on the list. I assigned Mr. Charles Finkenbinder, my chief deputy, the task of kind of working out all the kinks and providing the information, reaching out to property owners. And I have done that. And he's here today to report. So this first item, this first resolution is kind of the first step of many, I think, that you'll see. And it's a positive step forward in these projects. We'll be more efficient, more formative, informative. And I think it'll be a good result for the city. So, Mr. Finkenbinder?
All right, I hope everyone can hear me. So, yeah, this is a real estate contract to acquire that property. This is for the Donaghy widening, Donaghy Avenue widening project phase one. And this goes from, on Donaghy Avenue from Dave Ward to the college. Where there's going to be a roundabout at Donaghy and College. So this is one of the properties that's involved in that. The landowners have agreed to enter into that contract proposed by Transportation Department. So we feel pretty good about it. And we've also requested immediate access so that we can make sure we keep on schedule.
I make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Sorry, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
The next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve entering into a real estate contract to acquire property. Property, 2019, 2027, 55 College Avenue for the Donaghy Avenue Improvement Project. And resolution to be read for this one is resolution R-25.
Mr. Finkenbinder?
All right, this is the second contract that we've entered into or offered to enter to with the property owners again for the Donaghy Avenue widening project phase one. And we've requested it be approved. We're also requesting of the landowners, the ability to have immediate access to that. Again, the time schedule that we got from Department of Transportation, we want to take every step we can to make sure we meet that. One of the changes that Chuck introduced into this process was that immediate access that we're inserting into all our contractual offers. And what that's going to do is, is allow us or the Department of Transportation to begin the project even pending closing.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Passes-
Now, does, does there need to be an emergency clause on either one of those agreements since we're going to take over the property immediately?
No, I think that has been worked out with the, with famous.
Okay.
Yeah, they're allowing us immediate access. Is that right, Charles?
Okay.
Yeah.
Just- That's correct.
I didn't know if we had to wait a 30-day or anything like that on a resolution or not.
Mr. Hawkins?
Item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve entering into a real estate contract to acquire property at 602 Donaghy, the Donaghy Avenue Improvement Project. And we have a resolution to be read for this. It's resolution R-2026.
Mr. Finkenbinder?
And this is another one of those properties. This is a residential home along the Donaghy Avenue for part of the widening project. And we anticipate making contact with the homeowners regarding immediate access. We're going to be requesting that as well.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for entering to a real estate contract to acquire property located at 602 Donaghy Avenue for the Donaghy Avenue Improvement Project. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
It's be resolution R-2026. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins, on this next item, I asked Mr. Clausen if we needed to go through these each. And he advised that we do, that we need to go through each tract individually.
Very good. Well, we will do that. And we will start with this resolution to seek condemnation of properties. Tracks three, five, six, nine, 10, 11, and 12, located within the Donaghy Avenue Improvement Project. And the first of these to be read will be R-2027.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for tract three. Mr. Finkenbinder, would you like to tell us what tract three?
Tract three is again, one of the properties along the Donaghy Road project. The address is actually 2030 Hillman, but as you can see from driving by there, it fronts Donaghy Avenue. We have, I have made contact with the property owner. We are currently in discussions to negotiate an agreement on that case. I believe that we're fairly close, but there's some things that we still need to talk about. One of the things that, that Chuck is wanting to make sure that we do in all of these dealings is to fairly deal with property owners, but to make sure that just compensation and no more is paid.
And Mr. Finkenbinder, is this the property owned by Sophia Properties LLC?
Yes, it is.
I'm going to reference the owners of each of these properties. That's why we're having to do these individually. The others, I think, were owned by the same people. All pieces of property.
And just a point of clarification, the ones that we've been able to negotiate deals with, those were the resolutions. Otherwise, we're going to go ahead and proceed to condemnation, kind of as we explained last meeting, just to make sure that Finley and his group stay on, on time. And we get all these properties, either were under contract or acquired with an order of entry through condemnation.
Very good.
Anything else, counsel? I will take a motion to approve.
I think Sheila's already done now.
Everyone.
Okay, well, I, I lost my place. All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Passes eight to zero.
Next piece of property, Mr. Mayor, is listed as tract five. And this is owned by the family LLC. And resolution is resolution R-2028.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? I'll let Mr. Finkenbinder speak. And then if you'd like to ask questions, then we'll do it. Mr. Finkenbinder?
And this is another one, going back to what Chuck had said in previously in the processes. He, he has laid out in order to expedite the process of acquiring the real estate so that Transportation Department can meet its timetables. We believe that we will have an agreement on this with an immediate right of entry. These resolutions, though, as Chuck has pointed out, are, will provide the city attorney's office with the opportunity to immediately file condemnation actions if that becomes necessary. But we continuing to work on each of these properties to try to reach an agreement with the property owners.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. If there's no further discussion? Losing power over here. Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Counsel, let me ask you this. I think the explanation for all the next tracks, even though we have to vote for them or the individually, the explanation is still the same. So I'm just going to proceed unless you have a question about one particular area. Is that okay, Mr. Clausen, Mr. Finkenbinder? Okay.
As long as there are individual motions for each property, then we're good.
Okay.
For each resolution.
All right, good. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, our next piece of property is listed tract number six. For that, we have resolution R-2029.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for tract six. Any further, any discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
In case I didn't say it on that last one, Mr. Mayor, that was owned by the Lindsay Family.
Okay, thank you.
Lindsay Family Trust, that is correct. The next piece of property, Mr. Mayor, is listed as tract number nine by H.I.M.S. LLC, H.I.M.S. LLC. And we have a resolution for that item. It's resolution R-2030.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for tract nine. Any questions for Mr. Finkenbinder? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is tract number 10. It is owned by Southeast Realty Investments LLC. And the resolution is R-2031.
Make the motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution for tract 10. Any questions for Mr. Finkenbinder? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next location, Mr. Mayor, is tract number 11. And tract number 11 is owned by LeBlanc, Jim and Chloe LeBlanc. And this is tract number 11, and it's resolution R-2032.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any questions for Mr. Finkenbinder? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
This is eight to zero. And last one, Mr. Hawkins?
Last one, Mr. Mayor, is resolution R-2033. It's for tract number, I'm sorry, tract number 12, owned by Michael Lovelace, Wayne Carlson, Benon Kaiser, and Willis Smith, the owners on tract number 12.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for tract number 12. Any questions for Mr. Finkenbinder? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Next, we have our public safety committee. And first up is a resolution to approve applying for a Corona emergency, coronavirus emergency supplemental funds for the Conway Police Department. I believe Ms. Bryce and Chief Bradlin will be speaking to this.
Good evening. I'll speak for it. And this is a federal grant that's been available to the city of Conway. It's 89,009-18. And this is to help prevent, prepare for, and respond to the current pandemic. And we're hoping to get this out with your permission to apply.
Some moved.
Second.
Just, just a moment, please. We need to clarify something. I have, I have in the ordinance is 80, what did you say the number was, Jamie?
I'm sorry, 81,009-18.
Okay, that's correct. Thank you.
Sorry.
We have, that's no problem. We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? This is a good thing. Mr. Garrett?
It's be resolution R-2034. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Let's move into, say, some new business. I need the council's approval to extend the term of Allen Kaiser to the A and P Commission for 30 days. We did not get any, anyone to apply for that. And so we need, need your permission to extend Allen Kaiser's term for 30 days on the A and P Commission.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion.
Actually, we did, we did get someone to apply. It's just that the way we've been meeting, we needed to have him to stay on 30 additional days.
Okay. Okay, my bad. I was told we had not had any applicants. So we have had? Good, good. All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve the nomination of Allen Kaiser for 30-day extension on the A and P Commission. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. And our last bit of business is a resolution to approve applying for the bill 2020 grant for the Conway Connect project. I'm going to ask Mr. Vincent to start talking about this.
There are, so you have a resolution before you for the, giving the city authorization to apply for the grant. This is our third year to apply for this grant, but as a result of the fact that the Donaghy corridor construction is set to begin next month, we need to make some changes to the application. Hence, the reason that the, there are blanks in the last whereas paragraph. And we're asking the council to make a decision regarding the scope of this project. There are two alternatives that I think you've got in front of you, hopefully. And we can fill in the prices once the decision is made.
Okay. Mr. Gates, were you wanting to address this?
I think Brad's on.
Yeah, I think Brad has gotten on.
Okay.
Brad, if you want to jump in here. I don't have the, there you go. I don't have the, the two alternatives in there, but I think we were talking about the one that had, or in front of me, the one that included phase two of Donaghy, right?
Yeah, so-
Alternative one?
One.
Just to make sure, I guess you're familiar with kind of the scope of the project. This is what we call the Connect Conway project, which would essentially start with trail and cycling infrastructure where the current trail ends at the tennis courts at UCA. It would take it behind the business building, I think, across Donaghy. And then it would cover the drainage ditch that runs behind the president's house. That would become trail. Then it would go east down Bruce, I think, maybe with improvements on both sides of that street. Some improvements at the rail crossing. And then dedicated greenway through the old airport. It would cross the interstate, go behind Best Buy where the creek is. It would move north, go underneath Highway 64, continue north to the city of College Park. So that's one leg of it. Then if you were to go back to the intersection of Donaghy and Bruce, there would be some improvements to Bruce Street through the heart of campus that would do some traffic calming and some pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure there. And then go west through the neighborhood and eventually connect up to the Tucker Creek Trailhead. So essentially, we're connecting the southern and western parts of our trail system up to where the retail and sort of the job centers are. As Finley said, this is our third year to apply. I think we're getting better at it each year. We had a, have had some really productive conversations, one with some folks in Charleston, South Carolina, that had a bike fed grant that was approved last year. It was their third time to apply. And then the mayor and Felicia and Finley and Jamie and I were on a really productive call yesterday with some folks from the US Department of Transportation to give us even more feedback on what we need to do to make that application better. So I think we're getting better each time. And we're hopeful that third time's a charm because it would be a game changer for us as a city.
What, what, is that alternative one plan or two you're talking about?
One.
One. What, what would be alternative two plan?
You should have it in your email.
Um.
Let me see if I've got it.
I think on one of those, Finley, aren't you taking the Donaghy piece out of it?
Yeah, so that's the, the biggest difference between alternative one and alternative two. In fact, it's really the only difference is that for alternative two, Donaghy has been removed in its entirety. For alternative one, we have left the, left phase two of Donaghy in the application. The, there's, the, the problem with, there's advantages and disadvantages both ways. With alternative one, the required match, although it's technically higher, $3 million worth of that required match would go towards Donaghy Phase Two, which is money that we're already planning to spend. So that's an advantage there. The disadvantage is that it has the potential to delay that portion of the project. With alternative two, Donaghy's been removed entirely. So it obviously would not delay Donaghy in any way, but the required match is then higher in the sense that it's, it's, it's all cash that's required in addition to Donaghy project.
So in essence, in alternative one, if we were to go for that one, we pay an extra 781K in addition for our required match. And we can see an extra $3 million for Donaghy. Is that who I heard it?
For alternative one, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
So, so the required match for, for alternative one is a little less than 5 million.
Right.
It's, but 3 million of that goes to Donaghy Phase Two, which we are going to build anyway, essentially. So that, when you take out the land that the CDC is going to date, and then if you took out the 3 million that we're planning on building Donaghy Phase Two with anyway, then the cash that we'd have to come up with in addition to that is one and a half million.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Bart, Felicia had sent me a text in regards to the figures to go into the whereas.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. I have done something with it. I may have handed it to Chuck right here.
She's got that the total project will not exceed 25 million. And then the bill grant request will be 20 million. And then the city of Conway's local match will not exceed 5 million.
That's correct.
I have a quick-
Yes, Mr. Lynn?
Where, where will this 5 million come from after budget?
Well, there's, there's some question there. Chuck and I have been discussing it. Some of it can come from the 3/8 to 1% sales tax, but not all of it. I will let Mr. Clausen explain that. He's been on the phone with Gordon Wilburn today. So, Mr. Clausen, would you explain that portion?
I think the only concern is that the, you know, the ballot language said for the purpose of improving construction, repairing and widening certain streets. And then that also includes related plan and design for sidewalks and multi-use pathways. I think that we're, we're fine. I think this is a fantastic project. I think it's something that Conway sorely needs. I just, the, the only question I have, and Finley, I was going to get your opinion on this as well. If, if we get off any streets that are being improved with sales tax money- If, if we get off any streets that are being improved with sales tax money, I, I don't know if the, the, the sales tax can be, can be used for that, those trail portions. And I didn't know what that cost would be over and above, you know, the, the matching we're talking about here.
Yeah, and only one, one point five million in cash is what we're talking about, basically.
For alternative one?
Yes, on alternate one.
So Finley, how would that, how would it, how would this grant delay Donaghy?
Alternative one would if, if we, if we, obviously if we move forward with alternative one, then we would have to, we would not be able to bid Donaghy Phase Two until one of two things happened. Either we found out that we did not win the grant and we're ready to proceed forward, or if we did win the grant, we would not be able to proceed with the construction of Phase Two until the entirety of the grant project paperwork had been signed and that project was ready to move forward. And I've never worked personally on a large federal project of this scale. But the, we would have until September of twenty twenty-two to start.
Okay.
The fact that they're giving us that much time tells me that they might expect things to move slowly.
Okay. I, I guess since we're doing it regardless, we can't go ahead and, and get bid and things on what it would cost prior.
We could, we could get bid, we could, I mean, I guess we could take bids if we wanted to, but we wouldn't be able to let the project and get started on it because it would have to be part of the federal project. And I'm not sure, and, and the getting bids ahead of time, I don't think would do much good because the bids are only good for, for a period of time before they expire. We, the city is required to give notice of award and notice proceed within a certain amount of time after taking bids. So that's the reason. And since the, since Phase Two of the project, if Phase Two of the project was counted as part of our match, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't be allowed to go ahead and, and build it because it's got to be done. All of the engineering and construction's got to be done in accordance with federal regulations. It had, it would have to be part of overall bid.
I would think that if we're going to have to spend somewhere in the five million dollar range, make a little bit under that, and we're going to spend over three million dollars of it on Donaghy, I would say that we go ahead and, and go with, with that option one, alternative one bid, and include the Donaghy work in there. Rather than having to come up with, with almost five million dollars out of our pocket, that cuts our out-of-pocket cost to, to a million five. That's, that's my opinion.
I agree.
And, and this proposal is less than what we applied for last time overall. And I think in that proposal, it noted it was coming from that same sales tax, if I read it correctly. So if it was okay to use the last time, I would, I'm, I'm not the attorney Chuck, but I think it would, should be okay to use this time too.
I'm a little concerned about what our sales tax is going to be this time. We got a little downturn of the economy that we really don't know what's going to happen, where it's going to stop, or, or what have you for either of the options.
When it, when is, when is our portion of the money due? For the rematch?
It wouldn't be until we start the project, would it?
Finley?
Some, some portion of it would be required. Our, essentially, we would pay, we would pay twenty percent whenever bills come due. So at least that's my presumption. So some of it would be due immediately as engineering begins. But that would be a smaller percentage. The larger percentages would come once the contract is let, and that's when the bills would start coming in.
Could it come from trails money?
It, it potentially could. To speak to Mrs. Mel's point earlier, the, the, the initial application, or I'm sorry, the application last year was larger because it included all of Donaghy. And essentially, our, our match was going to build Donaghy, which was a road project. And so I think that's the reason that
That's how it's been.
Look at this a little closer. Could it come from trails money? Perhaps, although I obviously can't speak to whether or not the money exists in the budget for that.
Would you say you had a date that is going, that you know about the grant, or you just don't have any idea or what?
So this grant is, the timeframe is, is very short this time. We learned that during election years, they get this thing done quickly. Normally, normally, our deadline is the end of July and we find out by like November. This time, the deadline is next week. And so Gates, what do you think? About a hundred and fifty days by the time we know something?
Yeah, I think they said early fall.
That's great. That's great.
Do we, if we, if we apply and get accepted, does that bind us to go forward? Or like Mark said, if the money's not there, do we have the option to, to not participate?
Finley and I had that discussion today. We can, but we will probably shoot ourselves in the foot on future grants.
I, I agree, but this does not commit us to do that. If something goes even worse between now and then, applying and being accepted does not bind us to participate. Okay. Now, going back to another topic. You know, the, the cost obviously does matter. The money we spend is public dollars and it matters. And the time it takes matters. If it takes a little longer on Donaghy, that does matter. But probably what matters as much or more than anything is, is doing it right because this will last forever. And so I agree with Mr. Hawkins, we do number one. It does it more completely, more fully. And it really, it really does cost us less than alternative two because we're already going to spend some money anyway. If it takes a little longer, so be it. But it needs to be done right, and I, I would agree that we go after alternative one.
Second that.
I would like to express some thoughts briefly. First, let me say that I like this grant. I think it's a good grant. And after some of the phone conversations I've been involved with, with Brad in the chamber, yeah, I think we've got a really good chance to get it. Really do. I really do. But I just want the council to know my feelings on this. Okay. We've already laid off forty-four people part-time. Our AMP numbers are down about twenty-three percent. Tyler and I have been in meetings all week with Mr. Garrett and everyone else about what's going on with our economy and, and best case scenario, I think Mr. Winningham would tell you eighteen percent. That's best case scenario. I've already spoken with department heads about looking forward to furloughs and a higher, a spending freeze since early February. And right now, we really don't know what the economic impact's going to be to us as a city or really to us as a nation. I am concerned that it could move Donaghy back. If I, and Finley, correct me here, it could move Donaghy back as much as fourteen months. And if we use pay-as-you-go funds and remove some of our overlay programs, some of the things that we told folks we were going to do. The vote belongs to you, counsel. I will support it either way. But I felt like I needed to, to give you my thoughts because I have been with Mr. Garrett and Mr. Winningham all week. And no one knows. So I, I don't have the answers to COVID. I don't have the answers to our future economic impact in the city, but as mayor, I felt like I owed that to, to give my opinion for what it's worth.
Bart, you're exactly right to say that, and I think we'd all agree with that. I think a hundred and fifty days, what is that? Five months? I think what, we're going to know a whole lot in the next two, three, four, or five months. So we, we might not be able to do this, but I think stuff worth applying for. If we can leverage next year, five to get eighteen, nineteen, twenty million dollars from federal government investing communities, worth trying. But I agree with you. In, in five months, we might not be in a position to match it, but I think it's worth going forward and your, your points are duly noted.
Thank you. Fair enough. Anything else?
Do we need to make a motion and
We do.
Or you make a motion, we go with the alternative one?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to apply for the bill grant. Any further discussion?
Let me ask one question. Is, is there is a deadline to apply for this grant? Is that correct?
Next week?
I think that's what I heard somebody say.
Yes, I think it's next week.
And then if we, if, if things go awry, can we apply for it this time next year again? Or not?
Yes.
We can always apply for it, I think.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was always available or not to apply for.
So every, every year, Congress allocates a certain amount of money for this program. It, it's been around several years. It, it started in the previous administration. It was called the Tiger Grant Program, and now it's called the Build Grant Program. So this year, they allocated a billion dollars. And it's usually set where half of it can only go to rural areas and the other half goes to urban. So we're competing in that five hundred million dollar range on the urban side because we're part of the MSA.
Thanks, Brad.
A motion and a second to approve this for alternative one. Any further discussion?
Well, I'll just say that it, yes, no one knows what's going to happen in the next four, five months, given what's happening. But if, if we're, if we're not in a position to be able to participate, given what Conway has and is, then there's going to be a whole lot of other problems out there for, that will go way beyond this discussion. So I say we apply and see what happens.
Well, I agree with you, but I, my only concern is what about the people that he's talking about furloughing? People out of the job already. I mean, streets, I understand we need streets, but people need employment as well.
That's right.
And that's, that's what I'm concerned with.
But the money that we're using can't be used for salaries, can it?
It's street fund money.
No, I'm talking about the money we got to mess with. So that's what I'm saying.
That, that's
Some street, some street fund money, state turnback money is used for salaries.
In street.
Street, street fund salaries are not in the general fund.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have, and all those, this are great programs. Both of them are great, great grants. But we, we've cut back everywhere we can. Our department heads have. The mayor said, we, oh, I just don't think the timing is right for it.
Well, this would actually put people to work in the street department.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's just not street department, getting furloughed and stuff. They're not the only people being furloughed that's out of a job, not just the street department.
But this money can't be spent for them.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right for, you're right there. This money can't be spent for that.
I wasn't talking about just the street department people getting the money. I was talking about the other people that's out of a job and might be furloughed. That's what I was talking about, not just the street. I'm talking about city employees, period.
And, and future city employees possibly, if things don't improve.
Yes.
Yes, but that doesn't mean they do the street department funds for this.
We, I'm talking about the matching money. That's, I, I understand you talking about, I'm talking about the matching funds that we're about to spend.
We're not, we're not about to spend, and we don't know that we're going to have them yet. Like, we're just trying to apply to see if we can get them.
If we get the grant, do we have it?
But it would be street department funds, not general.
Street department, yeah. Street department funds would have to be used for it. Street funds.
Some of those street funds that we're doing our paving programs with now.
Perhaps, yes.
That we've told the people, that we've told the people that we're going to do, they pass the tax for.
You're talking about the repaint, the resurfacing and all?
Yes.
Mark, yes. Those would be put on hold.
Perhaps, likely, but not definitely.
Okay, one other question I'm through asking. How much money do we have in the street fund?
Mr. Winningham, are you on?
I don't think he is.
He is. Yes, he is.
Yeah, he is.
Can you answer that, please?
Well, that's a, that's a multi-layered question. I mean, you've got several different sources of funds that we use on streets. Our, our general street fund, maybe I shouldn't mix the term general and street, but the street fund that's funded by state turnback money that we use to really operate the street department as far as pay salaries benefits, plus do upkeep of, of equipment. That fund, based on our last financials, I think it's about five million dollars. Then you've got the three eighth cent sales tax that started in twenty eighteen. That fund, I think, is sitting at about nine million dollars. And then you've got as-you-go sales tax, which we use for major street projects. And then also to purchase police and fire vehicles, there's about, about two point eight million dollars in that fund. Now, keep in mind, the pay-as-you-go sales tax and the new street sales tax, the three eighth cent, you know, we've got, if anyone has a five-year plan for those two sources of funds, as far as, you know, projects on the rise and projects that council is already committed to. So those are the funds we have on hand, but we've already committed some of those.
And with alternative one, we're talking about an additional one point five million?
Yes.
Okay.
Finley, how much of that do we have committed to or not?
Seven million.
Winningham, are you still with us?
Yes, sir.
What about, what about Parks Capital? And Ms. Isby, I'm going to follow that up and ask about AMP money because this is, could be a situation where we are drawing people to town to ride our bike system. Do you think AMP money could be used? Mr. Winningham, your, your thought about that first? Could use any Parks Capital money?
Yes, I think we certainly could. We could use that source of funds to do trails. Before, my hesitation there would be, we've got an outstanding bond issue that debt service is owed on that. And that's how we, that's, that, those are the funds that are pledged to that bond issue. So there's no, no wiggle room there. Those funds have to be at least used to pay back that debt service. Then depending on what the, you know, lasting effect looks like on our restaurant business, we could, we just need to keep an eye on that. That brings in about a little over three million dollars annually to us in our debt service requirement for those bonds is about one point one million. So you know, I, I think, you know.
And that's during normal times.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's during Recent AMP numbers are not down as much as we were afraid they could be. But you know, if it all of a sudden goes down fifty, sixty plus percent, we're getting real close on an annual basis to just barely being able to pay that debt service.
Yeah. Ms. Isby, what do you think about using AMP funds that are generated for that?
I mean, I think it's a possibility. You know, even in our meeting yesterday, we talked about some of our funds that are not going to be expended because of events and things that have already been canceled and things that will likely also not be going forth. So those funds that we've allocated for those, of course, you know, we're just two of the whole committee, so.
Be worth a conversation with the whole commission.
Yes, it would.
Do we know how much we just spent on buying those eight pieces of property for the Donaghy improvement?
What was that, Mr. Hawkins?
Do we have any idea of how much money we just spent on buying those pieces of property that we just had to buy for the Donaghy?
Mr. Hawkins, I believe that we have a list here of the appraised values of the properties and those have been the off. Yeah, on the five contracts that were approved, the total is ninety-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars with an average contract price of nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-four. Some of the parcels were bigger than others, depending on the location of the property, how big it was.
And on AMP, I think we have a, a five-year million-dollar note too, for the, for the ball fields that we're paying on for field improvement.
That's the, the outstanding five-year loan we've got on that, Mr. Mayor, is for the finish out of the Expo Center.
Okay, so we don't have one for the field improvement?
No, sir, not at this time.
Tyler, how soon will we get know what the tax receipts are for April?
For general sales tax?
Yes.
It'll be June, the end of June.
Ten months.
Yeah, the the tax receipts we get at the end of this month will be for March, which will give us a bit of an indication, although March, you know, was still technically open for
I I guess what I'm I'm thinking, Mr. Mayor, is if we could have, and that's why I was asking about the timing, if we could have a committee meeting once we kind of get a sense from the March and April sales tax receipts, kind of the whole picture financially for the city and and what our options are.
Okay.
So that may be something like in July before we can do that.
And I'm if there's some wiggle room there, I'm not opposed to A and P funds being used.
Well, and I think what Andy and Sheila were talking about was the A and P commission funds, not the funds that we get.
Yeah, yes, correct.
So in addition, yeah.
Yeah, that would be separate
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just making sure anybody who's listening knows that's
Okay, thank you, thank you.
But this has to be decided on tonight, correct?
Yeah. Was it due, Brad?
So it is due on the eighteenth, which is Monday or Tuesday, I think. So we got we've got the bulk of it done. We're just putting some final details together on it.
Okay, counsel, we have a motion in a sec. I'm sorry, any other?
Everything everybody's talked about is absolutely valid, very good discussion. But here's the bottom line. We're we're talking about coming up with an extra one point five million in five months or some at some point after that, really, but within five months. Now, we're talking about one point five million. And within in five months, if we're not able to come up with one point five million, then like I said, there's a whole lot of the bigger problems out there to deal with than this. We simply walk away from the grant and and go on.
Move on.
But are we willing to do that if it does get approved?
Well, sure.
Yeah, we're going to have to.
Like I said, there's a whole lot of bigger problems to deal with.
Right. If we don't approve this now, we're pretty much saying no to potentially twenty million dollars.
Yeah, and that's like, if they want twenty million dollars attached to it, then probably already done with this conversation. A million five to get twenty million, that's a pretty good investment.
This makes me nervous because, you know, if we were in the position we were in before all this happened, it would be a no-brainer for sure.
We're not committing to spend it. We're just committing to try to get the money.
Right.
And the rematch fund is is four million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand. That's how much the matching fund is.
But we're already going to spend three of that.
Yeah.
On Donaghy. We're counting what we're spending on Donaghy towards the match.
So it would be an extra one point five, one point six.
But it does push us back on our Donaghy timeframe, or it can. And it does change some of our our it will change our overlay programs that that we have planned.
Well, we have any money to do any overlay projects then or not?
Finley, that would be your question.
To be honest, I I had an overlay program of about two million dollars that I was just about ready to advertise almost right before COVID nineteen hit. And as you may know, we're under a spending freeze right now. And so I elected to delay that bid opening just until I I I've talked with Tyler about this at length. And the last time we spoke, which was around the beginning of this month, he said that he thought we would have some much better projections at the end of the month. So I elected to wait on that bid opening just until I've got better data. But I mean, I I expect it would impact it, but at this point, I don't know how much because I the COVID nineteen has a potential to impact it significantly as well.
Good, good discussion, counsel. Anything, anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve applying for this grant alternate alternative one. And Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure. Would you call the roll, Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
No.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Six-two, mayor.
Okay, that passed a six to two. Thank you for your time, everyone.
It was a good conversation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I needed to tell y'all what what we've been spending all of our time at City Hall has been future projections. I just like I had to do the I had to do the right thing there. Anyway.
I appreciate you doing that. Thank you very much for that.
With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
This was a very hard decision for all.
Yes, sir, it was, Mr. Jones. Thank you.